Good evening. I'll now call the City of Cannon Falls City Council Meeting for Tuesday, March the 18th to order. Roll call.
Here.
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 Okay.
Let's close.
Here.
All right, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome back to winter. I guess it's coming back tonight. We can't seem to shake her, but we'll get through it. This time, the chair will take a motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
I'll second.
Of a motion by Merle, second by Bill. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Moves us to item five this evening on the agenda, the public input. Citizens may speak to issues not on the agenda. Before speaking, please give your name and address for the minutes, and please limit your comments to three minutes. Is there anyone wishing to speak to any items that are not on the agenda? So if not, we'll move on to the consent agenda, which is item six. Items on this area of the agenda may be adopted, or they may be removed and placed on the business area of the agenda for discussion purposes before approving. For those folks at home, I will read the consent agenda. It's kind of a long one tonight. Item A is the just and correct claims for the accounting period ending March the 14th, 2014. Item B are the meeting minutes for the March 6, 2014 city council meeting. Item C, Resolution 2064, approving a conditional use permit for public art mural. Item D, Resolution 2065, approving rezoning and preliminary plat for Mulhill Development. Item E, introduction and first reading of ordinance 335, amending chapter 152 of the Cannon Falls City Code by rezoning certain property from a planned unit development district to an R2, single-family residential district. Item F, Resolution 2066, approving rezoning of 200 Waters LLC. Item G, introduction and first reading of ordinance 336, amending chapter 152 of the Cannon Falls City Code by rezoning certain property from a R3, medium-density residential to an L1, limited industrial district. Item H, Resolution 2067, approving a conditional use permit for 1201 Fifth Street North. Item I is the burning permit request. Item J, Personnel Committee Recommendations. Item K, resignation of Nick Sather, internal promotion of Jacob Edwinson to the Police Department. Introduction and first reading of ordinance 337, changing street names in the City of Cannon Falls. Item N, or M, the sale of grass-rig fire truck. Item N, the Goodhue County Mutual Aid Fire Services Agreement. And item O, the MS tram tour, bicycle tour request. Are there any items anyone wishes to bring down this evening?
J.
Item J will be, come item 7B, which is the personnel. Any other items?
There's so many, and Robbie, I wanted to bring down, but-
Bring them down.
Talked to Ron today about it.
Bring them down.
Huh?
Bring them down.
D, F, H, E, and G.
D, F, G, and H?
D, F, H, E, and G.
D, F, H.
E, and G.
A D will become item 7C, which is Resolution 2065. Item F, which is Resolution 2066, which will become item D. Item E will be item G, which is amending chapter 152. And the last one, Leroy?
G.
Okay. So D, which ones were they again?
D, F, H, E, and G.
Okay, E. Okay, E will become 7F, and H will become 7G.
Some of them tie together.
Yep, they're tied together, but we have to bring them all down like that. Any other items?
Mayor and council members, City Attorney Pollard had mentioned to me today that she would like to see the under item, excuse me, under item 6C, the mural approval. She would like just a, the wording citing the specific exhibit as Exhibit A, so that specific mural is being approved rather than a mural in general. So to, under, under one of the whereas's, it states that what we would do is under item, the third whereas, item C, the mural, and she would like the wording identified as Exhibit A added in there, and then have the picture of the mural as item A. I'm just bringing that up now. If you want to approve it under consent, or if you want to pull it down too, it's fine.
Anybody got any issues with that? Now, we can leave it under consent?
Yeah, I think we can leave it under consent.
Okay, we'll leave that under there. Okay, with the exceptions of item B, C, D, E, F, G, and H, was one of them also, Leroy?
Yeah.
Chair, take a motion to approve the consent agenda as submitted.
I'll second that.
Of a motion by Merle, second by Bill. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. All right, that brings us on to the council business this evening. Item 7A is a library leak issue.
I guess.
Go ahead, sir.
As the memo stated, last Monday, we did have some pretty horrible leaks in the library, and they consistently grew throughout the day. So we did contact Bossert, which was the construction manager for the new building. And tonight, we're going to present the findings from Bossert hired American Engineering to look and see what was going on, because the leaks were in the same place that they were last year. We thought we had taken care of that with putting the sidewalk down and putting the east gutter on. Obviously, that was not the case, because they were back this year. So I'll turn it over to Shane Butler and John-
John Admanson.
Admanson from American Engineering to tell you what they found, what they're thinking, and probably a little work we have to do to find out the root of the problem.
Do you do your thing, John?
Okay. Well, what do you want me to do with these, US?
Absolutely. Pass out, we have some reports for you guys.
I'm John Admanson with American Engineering Testing. I was down here last Tuesday.
Basically, what I'm going to do is I have a little PowerPoint presentation. It doesn't follow the report exactly, but I just, I just want to walk everybody through with what I've seen and where, and where we are to date with, with it. Yeah, it's, it's going to take me a minute, or it's going to take my computer a minute. Just for background on myself, as I was saying, I work for American Engineering Testing. I've been doing, I've been with American for 19 years now. I've been doing forensic investigations for all of those 19 years, plus I was doing that prior to my joining AET. So I've been down this, been involved in situations like this in the past, so come on. So anyway, like I said, we were here on March 11th, and just to familiarize everybody with what, what we did and what's, and what's in the report, I was just going to go through basically a slide presentation, so you can see, you know, what, what I was looking at to, we got some technical difficulties here. What, what I was looking at. Anyway, just, just for reference, this is the front of the building. This, this is the south side, looking north, and that's also the south. This is the southeast corner of the building. This is also the southeast corner. You can see where the, where the sandbags are, and the water's been running around onto the sidewalk there. And that's the east side, where you have your scuppers that run down onto the east side there. You can see the one that's close to the south end, but there's another one closer to the north end that also supposedly slopes to the south, so it all runs to the, to the front edge. And this is the first step back west of the southeast corner, and that, this step back's referenced quite a bit in, in the report as, as we go through it. And there's a close-up of that area, and if you, let me get me a pointer, and I'll point out. It may be hard to see, but the walls are dry when we were there, except right along the top of the sidewalk here. You can see the wet spots directly along the top of the sidewalk that, that have not dried out. And this is in the interior along the south side, look, looking to the southeast corner, where the, where the painted green and the yellow meet there, that's, that's the step-back corner I'll be talking about quite a bit. And this is from the fireplace, looking north along the east wall as well. This was damp in this area, but it wasn't as wet as the south, especially at that step-back area. And what, what we did is we, we, we made some test cuts at the floors, so we could see into the wall, and try to look up and see if we could see water coming down the wall, or what, or what we could see. But what, what we found in, and it's a, it's, it's a six-inch steel stud with, with a track, and what we found on the sill track there is water's physically standing in the sill track at the test location. And then we took that one, and then we took another one back in that step-back corner, and down there, there was water also standing in the sill at that location as well. And then we went around the corner to the right there of that step-back, and at that corner, the, the channel, the six-inch channel, that's about an inch and a half tall, was completely full of water. And the water was actually running out of the channel, but it was still plumb full. And when you put your ear to that hole, you could hear water trickling somewhere up the wall to the west a little bit. But, and then there was a crack in the floor slab adjacent this area, and the water that was coming out of that track was running onto the floor and physically running down into that crack in the floor slab. Because first, we thought maybe the water had breached the whole foundation, was coming up on the inside of the building, which, which can happen if there's enough water pressure and the soils are proper, are right to, for that kind of situation. But when we saw the water physically running into the slab, we knew the water was coming down from, from, from someplace else. So then we went further down along the wall and did a, a fourth test cut in there, and, and the baseboard is wet there, and the bottom of the gypsum sheathing's wet there as well. And in this track, there, at this location, there was about an inch, maybe a little bit more than an inch of water. So that's basically our openings, you know, because a lot of times, that's kind of what, what we do. We open things up to look, to try to figure out, well, what we're looking at. But since we're inside a library, we, we didn't feel it was ours to tear apart the, tear apart the wall. But based on what we've seen so far, I believe what's happening is the, the roof is melting, the water runs off the east side in the afternoon, it's in the shade, so the ground is still fairly frozen on the east side. It runs down and around, and it, some of it soaks in, and it gets underneath the sidewalk slab there. But there's a lot of frost in the ground. If you read my report, a lot of roads still have close to nine feet of frost on, under the roads. So there's still a lot of frost in the ground. And what I think it does is the water makes a bathtub effect up against the building, because it'll melt the wa, you know, it'll melt adjacent to building first, because the building's warm. And, and since there is a lot of frost this year, the water isn't getting down like, like it should. I mean, our drillers, we do geotechnical soil borings, and our drillers are still finding close to eight feet of frost in the roadways where the snow has cleared off. So, you know, I, I believe, you know, there's, there's frost under there, and it's made a bathtub against the wall, and it's holding the water higher than it normally would be held. Here's under the window, you can see where, you know, where the block is still wet, like it's really saturated in that, in that location. And then this, this is that step-back corner. Based on my report, and it's my opinion that we should go into this, at least take this panel off and this panel off, and revisit the waterproofing system in there versus the plans and specs, and, and make sure that, you know, the waterproofing system, you know, in this area was, was, was adequate, because that's where we heard the water, that's where we saw most of the water, and, and that's where the maintenance gentleman that was cleaning actually found most of the water. So I, I think the, the major water infiltration location is confined to that, that location. And that, and that's basically, you know, what, what we've done and where we're at at this point. And I guess I'm, you know, it's in my report what I recommend, that we open this up, take a look. So that's about all I have.
Yep. But then also, our plan is to hire, go ahead and hire AET and get them out there to do this work immediately, as soon as they're able to get scheduled to do this. And then once we figure out exactly what the problem is and determine where the water's coming in, then we can find some way to correct it, either to fix the waterproofing, if that's the issue, or increase the height of the waterproofing, in case the water is bathtubbing, going over the waterproofing.
Who's paying for it?
Once we determine responsibility and the cause of the issue, then we can assign costs.
Not the city.
Nope. I don't think the city would be paying for this.
Now, we met, I met with you and somebody else, another cement contractor here, when we had troubles in the summer-
Yep.
-before you guys did this. And you said, and this other guy told you about how coarse that stuff is, where it will go through. And he advised you, and you agreed that you were going to get the water away from the building. And then all you do is put this little cement thing, and that's it. You know, you were going to have this more elaborate thing, and we got nothing, really.
Well, it was actually never our plan to put the sidewalk. I believe that was a city's plan. They wanted to add that sidewalk. And what we did is last summer in June, we actually excavated that area, about eight feet there, and checked the waterproofing, and the waterproofing did look fine at that point.
Yeah, but you really didn't do a good job.
Okay.
If you would have looked at that after it was done, I don't know if you ever did, which I doubt, it wasn't good. And I guess from your word that I heard from you, and I can get this other guy, I wish I would have gotten him here tonight, because he would have told you exactly in so many words what you said. And personally, I think it was you guys' fault, and I won't back off on that.
I just wanted to make a couple of comments. You're beyond a doubt sure that the roof drains didn't freeze up, and we didn't get any backup up on the roof that actually got over a flash, even got down inside of the wall. You're sure that that's not happening?
You're asking me? No, I, I have not been on the roof. I, and definitely I wasn't on the roof when the snow was backed up. So, but it's not running down the wall, where I can see it, it's not running down the wall. It's, it's coming in, you know, at the base. It's, it's right at the base of the wall, because the wall above there, above, you know, where it is in those channels, is, is dry at the locations we, we were looking in. You didn't see anything at the heads of the windows, you know, which is another indication it's coming from above. You know, I, I didn't see anything that, like that along the south wall either.
The other thing that I wanted to ask you about is that this doesn't surprise me that this happened, because for one thing, I, we don't hardly do any new construction anymore without tile on the inside or the outside of the building, do a some take. We, practically every job we do nowadays, they require us to do that, not only for drainage, but for rate on. So I am surprised that there wasn't kind of a, that there wasn't a drainage system put in there originally into a some take. The other thing that strikes me a little bit funny with your theory there is, is that this building should be heated underneath. I assume the outside walls, we had probably at least six inches of heat travel through the walls, and of course, they were thawed out, so that's where the water went down. But I don't quite understand why it came around the corner and followed the sidewalk and just come in one spot, when the ground underneath that building should be thawed out because of the heat inside the building. The other thing is, we do have a rock layer in that area there. Normally, water will hit that rock layer and disappear, find a crack and just disappear. So I, I'm not doubting what you say, it just, to go from that east wall and the back scupper there, and I can understand that back wall being froze and, and the sidewalk area being froze. But there should have been underneath the building there, I would think that wouldn't have been froze. So I'm kind of surprised that it froze underneath the building and actually created a pocket where it could only come out in the building. So that's, that's my concerns with that. But I do know that this was an ongoing issue with the scuppers in the back of the building. And the drainage problem that we did there last summer, without digging it up and putting liners in there and stuff so it can't go down through, I kind of was afraid this might happen. So I just wanted to comment on those things, to make sure that it isn't something coming down in the wall itself from some freeze up on the roof too.
And I, and I will say, there is drain tile on the east side of the building, along the footings, and then in the front too.
And where does that come out then? And where does that come out then?
I, I think it comes, runs into the catch basin, that's at the southwest corner of the building.
On the outside?
Yes, on the outside. And that's another thing we wanted to check too. We wanted to check, make sure that the drain tile on the east side of the building's not clogged. Because before we had, um, the swale dug, uh, last summer. And there was a liner that was put in per that, the detail from SEH. Uh, before that was dug, it was just sediment there and it got muddy. So I have a feeling it's possible that that sediment got down and kind of plugged up that drain tile, so that's possible.
And that's strictly on the east side?
Uh, there's drain tile on the east and the, and the front.
And the south side, is there any tile along there underneath that sidewalk?
Yes.
And that comes out where, down by the road down there?
Yeah, kind of, uh, west of the door, right?
Yep.
And that comes into a sub basin outside?
Yeah, it's a catch basin.
And have you pulled that off and is that all frozen up and iced up or?
Uh, we haven't looked at that.
Okay, thank you.
And Bossard is committed to taking care of this issue for the cities.
And when do you think, uh, you'll start on this? I mean?
Uh, as soon as AET, uh, is available. I, I talked to John. If, if, you know, they can't get at it sooner, we'll find somebody else that can do the work.
I think we'd like to get it done sooner with spring coming and summer coming.
Absolutely.
Get this done as soon as possible and, and get this fixed so we don't have to keep doing this year after year.
Absolutely, and we don't want to inconvenience the library patrons or the city anymore than you guys do, so.
Are you gonna gut it and try to get rid of the mold problems? Or are you gonna do an ozone treatment? Or how, how far extent are you gonna go with this?
The, the plan would be to take off the bottom level, bottom maybe two feet of drywall along that whole area, uh, replace that, obviously replace the insulation and any carpet that needs replacement too.
You know, if it comes through the floor, it's an easy fix. You could knock the floor out, put in some drainage tile or something, get rid of it. But when it comes through the wall like this, that's not an easy fix. So I'm really curious to see why the drain tile didn't work and stuff, so be waiting to hear more.
Well, thanks for the update. If you guys can get to it as soon as possible, I mean, uh,
Very well.
Uh, and then, uh, Ron, if you can, uh, keep us informed on what's going on, uh, so that we can, uh, make sure this gets fixed the right way and not at the city's cost.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that's gonna move us on to item seven B, which is the, uh, Personnel Committee Recommendations.
Um, all I wanted to do is abstain from the vote on that because of relationship. And I wanted to vote on the rest, so.
Okay. All right, uh, any other comments? If not, the chair will take a motion to approve the recommendations of the Personnel Committee, uh, as stated.
No, I'll second.
Motion by Merle, second by Bill. All those in favor?
Aye.
Close? And?
One abstain.
One abstain. Passes. Thanks, Morris.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And that's gonna move us on to item seven C, which is Resolution twenty sixty five, uh, the rezoning for plat for Mulville Development.
Okay. The only concerns I had with that was, uh, we kind of been dealing with this stuff for like three years now or longer. I was on the Planning Commission a good few years ago and stuff when this started. The one thing, uh, when we, we decided to do the sewer and water system on them twelve houses over there, um, we wanted to stub in for the Mulville Hill lots over there. And they didn't want that at the time, because their design was gonna be different. Um, they were gonna have the two roads that went out a different direction and everything was gonna be fed and come through that way. Then after, uh, talking to Aaron, uh, they decided they did want the six lots over there, which changed everything, because then I told Aaron, if we're gonna bring six lots onto that road that's got two houses on it now, then we should make that road a better road and stuff. And there should be assessments to them six lots to make that road bigger and stuff. Um, but then nothing got done about that. And we were told at the time that, uh, the lots and the plating was gonna be completely different now than what it was before. So now I, I guess I still don't know, uh, I don't want to stop progress, because that's such a great area for housing and for schools and everything. The other thing that I did ask is that there's a major culvert, like a seven foot culvert underneath by the school there. I was concerned at that time, uh, if we changed the water flow too much, that that comes out right by the school, so that we address that issue. Also, if we could change the flow of the water, that culvert made a great place for kids to cross underneath that Iway nineteen. So there was all these issues, um, and then this just kind of got brought up again and seemed like it was all going in the same direction. So, the other thing I was thinking about, there's like a hundred and some houses over there, if the thing fully went through, and there's only gonna be two outlets to that. So I thought possibly we should think about tying the cemetery road into the one end of that too, so there'd at least be three outlets if there was some kind of emergency someday. And the other thing I was concerned about is how the, the new road and the bike and the walking trail was all gonna tie back into this in their design and their development if that had been dealt with too. So, uh, I talked, I, I called up and wanted to talk to Dave about all this. He's on vacation this week, so I talked to Ron about it and told him my concerns. And Ron assured me that this is the first of at least two more meetings. Um, but I just wanted to bring that up, that, uh, Ron was aware of it, uh, to look into this more and, uh, make sure we got all these questions answered before we move with it.
Yep, and, uh, we did get a, uh, some feedback from, uh, Mendat this afternoon on, on that property with the, uh, um, they reviewed, District Six reviewed it, uh, and they had some concerns with the, uh, how the stormwater runoff's going to affect the highway system there. So, I mean, that's gonna have to be addressed before final approval's done, uh, going forward with that.
Yeah, and maybe for council's, uh, uh, information, the, uh, the Planning Commission did meet on this a week ago, Monday, on the tenth. And during that, during that meeting, they did recommend, as you'll see in the packet, approval of the rezone, for you to, to go ahead with the ordinance change on the rezone, and the preliminary plat of the, of course, the first six lots. And what they did then at the meeting was continued their public hearing, because that was a public hearing they held. Um, they continued their public hearing until the, or recessed it until the, uh, April fourteenth, their regular meeting in April. So they will address kind of the phase two or what shakes out with that, as I understand it.
Because we were waiting for some of the county decision on the driveway or the entrances and how the road and everything was gonna go there.
Yeah, that's correct. They were looking for, uh, purpose primarily was to receive the information or comments that they anticipated from Mendat, which we received this afternoon. And then also from Goodview County, which I would expect. I know Goodview County has been talking with, uh, Mr. Mulville Hill out onsite. And I would, I would assume that we'd be seeing something from them, or the Planning Commission would be seeing something from them prior to their meeting. So there is a, there is a suggestion, again, uh, City Attorney Poller looked at it and I discussed it, looked at the resolution and, and after we discussed back and forth quite a bit, um, I have the suggestion that she came up with to modify the resolution ever so slightly, three, four words.
Yep, and it states, uh, if we look at the council action here, I mean, it's, uh, the resolution would be to read, uh, whereas the Planning Commission has reviewed Phase One of the preliminary plat identified as the Mulville Hill, uh, Mulville Hill property and finds that the plat is not considered to be a premature subdivision as defined by Chapter one fifty one point zero two eight. The proposed, the proposed project and plat for Phase One can satisfy applicable performance standards of Chapter one fifty one and other city land development improvements. And as recommended by the Planning Commission, the city council's asked to approve the resolution, adopting fines to support a rezoning of the entire parcel to an R two district and the preliminary plat for Phase One. Do I have a recommendation?
No, I'll second that.
A motion by Merle, and second by Bill. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close? It carries. All right, that moves us on to item seven D, uh, which is Resolution twenty sixty six, uh, the rezoning for Two Hundred Water Street, uh, LLC.
Yeah, that one there, um, um, I was kind of curious, uh, the guy was there from Southeastern Minnesota Housing. It appeared to me at the Planning Commission, like he really didn't know a lot about it or hadn't been informed or something. I guess I was kind of curious, because I, I learned about this watching, uh, Planning Commission and I'm only a block away. So I was kind of wondering how the notices went out on this. The other thing is, is that, um, um, something has to fit into that building, uh, we want to keep that on our tax base. Uh, something has to be done, but I guess I was hoping, uh, something like an office area or workout center or something like that connected to the trail. Um, we're talking about kind of a light industrial type thing. I also do like entrepreneurship. I know that the right person in there will be considered a neighbor's and not get too crazy. But they could expand. I was concerned about semis coming down all our side streets there. The one that comes down by Rod's Liquor, if there's cars parked on both sides, it's really tight for a semi to get through there if they had to have shipping in there. So I wasn't out to, uh, stop the project or not approve of the project. I just, uh, was hoping that there probably could be a better fit. The biggest concern I have is that somebody will go in there and be successful and it gets sold out to a corporate America. And they'll come in there and have very little feelings about, um, the noise and what's going on. The other thing I have a big concern about is that we, um, camera that sewer system that comes out of the back of the building and goes across the Stedman property to make sure we get that issue taken care of, um, in this transfer if we, this gets sold and goes ahead this way, that all those issues get dealt with, um, for the Stedmans and for our knowledge. I know that sewer pipe they're talking about at one time dumped right into the river and I assume it don't, but it could dead end down there someplace. Could, so they could move in there and think they got a sewer system and it probably isn't working. So we definitely need to, to camera that thing and get that issue taken care of. Uh, and just to make sure the person that's doing this is aware of that. Um, we want something that fits in like a Rob Bristol where it, it fits in and yet it's a quiet neighborhood. Rob Bristol's actually easier to get to for trucking and stuff than this area, so just had them concerns.
Yeah, they did, they did address the, uh, uh, the sewer pipe issue at that, at that, uh, at the Planning Commission, so they're aware of that and they're gonna be checking into that. And if you've read, uh, the background on this rezoning request, uh, the Planning Commission recommended that the second reading, because this has to be read twice, uh, not to rezone would not be scheduled until, one, a property survey has been, uh, approved. And we also get a response from, uh, like the Sem, Sempra people and that.
Yep.
So we can hear from them before you would do a second reading.
And I really don't want to put a, a light industrial island in a residential area. Um, if you saw the Planning Commission meeting the other night, one of the things that Dave Maroney brought up was the fact that if we rezon this from residential to light industrial and a business goes in there that's not real, um, complimentary to the area and we start having these issues with noise, pollution, um, and, and the other things that go on, traffic problems, all this stuff, we're stuck. We can't move it. I mean, uh, and we just have to deal with it.
That's exactly what I'm concerned about, I guess.
And, you know, you got Third Street that dumps almost right onto that driveway there.
Yep.
Uh, by the old Creamery. You've got trail traffic through there, especially in the summertime. You know, you got cars parking along the, the trail there, uh, to get on the trail, uh, even around the corner there. So, I, and I've talked to some other people that agree, uh, some people that live around there, that, that they really don't see that, I mean, they agree that we don't need to put an industrial island in a residential area. I mean, uh, uh, we've got other places around town that are empty that are already industri-, I mean, uh, zoned industrial that, that some of these little businesses could go into as, you know, as startup businesses. But I really don't like the idea of putting a, a light industrial area in an already, uh, congested, uh, I mean, with traffic and everything else in there. And if we do it the wrong way, we're stuck. I mean, I'd like to see, you know, we get a lot of people that say there's no rental properties in town to move into and there's not a lot of them. So, I mean, I'd like to see something that would go in there where we had rental properties or, or something for people to move into. Uh, because, uh, I mean, you can buy houses, but you can't rent anything in town that's, uh, decent enough for a lot of people to move into. So, I mean, I think that's what I'd like to see going there, advice of business in the middle of the neighborhood.
But we could, until we got all the answers, uh, from other owners in the area and the survey, we could at least do the first reading. And if we find that it's a problem, not do a second reading and, uh, and, uh, go that route, which we have done on a couple of occasions, at least in my time on the council, so.
Ron brought that up today too, that there would have to be another reading at another Planning Commission meeting, right?
Yeah, because there, we stipulated that, it was the same thing.
Right, that's, that's part of the stipulation. There'd be a second reading on the,
Yep, and then it has to have second reading.
Second reading at council level.
Yep.
Right.
Right, and we wouldn't schedule a second reading until some of these questions were answered. And I think that was, uh, Jay, that was your conclusion?
Yep.
So if we read this tonight, then, I mean, the rezoning's not approved?
No. Correct. No, it is not.
It's just the first step.
It's the first step, so we can answer the questions.
Yeah, I mean, because there's, there's a lot of questions there and, uh, when we start looking at this, and I think we need more information, a lot more information. Uh, because when I first got this in the package, I didn't know what they were planning on doing there. And, uh, Dave Maroney was gone and he wasn't there to talk to on it.
Yeah, the, the one company in, in, uh, that is the main, Steve Auger, uh, small medical, uh, device type things.
Yeah, it's real little minute micro, little small parts that he makes for certain machines in the medical field.
I'd like to see more on what is done and what type of process, whether it's plastic and, I mean,
Mostly plastic.
I mean, and what kind of smells, we're gonna get out of that plastic when he started heating up machines to melt that stuff and all. I mean, there's stuff that we're gonna have to look at.
It's all mostly all tool and die, where it's just cut out of tool and die or CNC machine.
So we'll, we'll have to look at that and see.
Yeah, if there is injection molding, if there is vacuum braking, that, that can change everything when it comes to plastics. I mean, a lot of your problems you got over here, um, on Conner Road seventeen over there is, is because of injection molding and stuff. is because of injection molding and stuff, so, yeah, I think if, especially in that area, it just, uh, needs to be really thought about and, uh, hopefully it is a good fit, I guess.
You know, the big, the more big truck traffic you put on there, the more it tears up our roads in there, I mean, and, you know, if you're gonna carry plastic in there, you're gonna have to have a truck to get it in there and trucks to get it out, and, uh, you know, you're just, we're just asking for more issues in, in a pretty quiet area right now.
And that's one of the questions we'd have to ask, is what, I mean, there's a difference between semis versus just a-
And he kinda said he travel, he transports most of it in the pickup now, cause it's basically, it's many small little parts.
Yeah, now, that's, that's, that's the optimal word, now.
Yeah.
You know, I, I still think that industry, industry needs to be outside of the, of a residential area, doesn't need to be in, in a residential area, um, uh, as far as that goes. But at this time, uh, if-
It doesn't matter if we do this first reading and then never do a second reading?
We have that option, yes.
Right.
And it has happened on the council before.
So, it just kinda sits out there?
And-
Do we have to cancel it? Do we?
Well, the, the council generally would then disapprove the ordinance. If, Ron, would that be a correct way of putting it?
I'd need the charter in front of me, but I think there's a certain timeframe before it can be brought back. Now, obviously, if, if there's not a second reading approved, it's not approved, so, and that's the purpose of having the two readings, is, is often that's what's, well, I don't know about here, but often that's what happens.
Well, to protect both sides.
Right.
Correct.
So.
And it also provides another opportunity for the public to provide input.
Correct.
Or could we table this until such time as, uh, uh, we get the information and go on with it instead of having to jump through more hoops?
Yeah, I don't know the urgency, I didn't hear the urgency at the meeting as far as whether you table this tonight or conduct the first reading and even potentially table the second reading, um, completely what you, your call as to what to do.
Well, if we, if we tabled it though, then we'd probably have to wait till a meeting after the next planning commission, I, I would imagine, cause that's when the questions would be answered, wouldn't it?
Well, the sewer water thing and the property line thing, that's all should be dealt with before we, we even consider this, I think, I don't know.
The one issue that, that we're gonna have is related to, or could have, I should say, is the, uh, 60-day rule with the rezone. Date of application, we have 60 days to act on it, either to approve it or reject it. And so, I don't know what the date of the application was for this particular project. Um, so, we'd have 60 days from then, we can, we can request an extension of, from the developer or the applicant on this to do that.
Okay, what's the time, what's the timeframe between, if we pass this first reading tonight, what's the timeframe for the second?
Second reading has to be 10 days, so it could happen at April 1st, or you could table it at April 1st and, and have it on the 15th. But you could do it, just like any of the other ordinances that are up for first reading tonight, you could have those approved at the, uh, April 1st meeting because there are 10 days in between. As I understand it from when I, cause I asked Lynell that question today, I called her at her conference and, and, uh, your code used to say the 30-day, used to have a full 30-day.
Right.
But that apparently was changed sometime ago or shortly ago.
Yeah, it, I remember we changed it, but, so what's the urgency to, to pass this first reading now?
Well-
I don't know if there is an urgency or not, I, I wish, uh, the Lawrences or Mr. Auger were here, that would've, would've helped.
And when is your next planning commission meeting?
What would that be, 14th?
Yeah, I think so.
Something like that, yeah.
I guess I would recommend, based on the uncertainty in the question out there, I would, uh, yeah, two weeks is two weeks, I would, I would recommend to table the first reading till next meeting.
I'll make that a motion.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second to table resolution 2066 until the next meeting. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's tabled.
I think it's okay if, Ron, is, isn't it okay if they wanna go ahead and do their surveys and, and do this, this sewer study, or is the city gonna do this sewer study thing, how's that gonna work?
Aye.
Boy, I don't have the answer to that, but I don't anticipate that the city's gonna be doing the sewer study.
I think it was up to him, the way I understood it.
Yeah, they're gonna do that.
It was up to Steve and Bob and-
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Okay.
And they're not gonna wanna put a lot of expense in if they're not gonna get, if they don't have an indication that-
I don't know, uh, Jay, do you recall, has the sale already gone through, I, I can't remember what they said.
I see the survey was up there for a few days.
I don't think, I don't think it did, I think there, this is kinda continued.
I, I wonder if that was, would've been, might've met the thing of urgency, I don't know, but-
Yeah. Um, item E, 7E is the amended one of, which was item G that we brought down, uh, we will be tabling that also, if, I can have a motion for that, which is-
Second. Oh, yeah.
Have a motion by Merle, second by Rod to table, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And then, item E was part of the introduction and first reading of ordinance 335, amending chapter 152 of the code, that's for the, uh, Mobile property.
Right.
We need to get approval for that, cause we approved the resolution.
I'll make a motion for that.
A second.
Motion by Leroy, second by Merle, to approve resolution, or, or approve the introduction and first reading of ordinance 335, amending chapter 152 of the city, of the Cannon Falls City Code by rezoning, uh, a certain property for a planned unit development district to an R2 single-family residential district. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And the last one was item H, which is resolution 2067, Leroy.
Yeah, that one there, um, this is one of those things where, when you've been on the council too long, you, you, uh, experience things from years past and it comes back again, and this is one of those things where, uh, I have no issue with what's proposed over there and what's going on, I just wanted to make sure that the buyers are aware that we had an issue a couple of years ago with the church that wanted to build over there and when we got to looking into it, uh, the, all the drainage from like Cannon Equipment and that area over there went down behind Senex and then down behind this house and it went across this church lots and it actually come through a guy's garage over there, and we knew that someday we were gonna have to deal with this, um, and, uh, when the time comes up, they wanna develop this or something over there. So, I just wanted, uh, the new owner that, that buys this, uh, be aware of that there is drainage behind that house and that is important to that area.
And that was also brought up at the planning commission meeting, knowing that that's, it may not adversely affect this property directly, but it does affect that open area more, and Jerry, there, the buyers are aware of that potential situation, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
There's a drainage, uh, indication there, if you can follow the arrow, please.
Yep.
Hey, Ron, is that a problem?
Yeah.
You can see how the drainage is all-
The drainage is all going to the, uh, north.
Northeast.
Northeast, yep.
The other concern I had with that at the time was, uh, Aaron and I discussed it, uh, like a couple of years ago and stuff, and I told Aaron at that time to make sure that, um, things are vacated back there and we have the right of way and all that stuff in there, it kinda came out to be kind of a deer in the headlights look like, uh, wow, I don't know where we're at on all that, so, I just wanted everybody to be aware of that, that drainage problem, and if they buy this property and, and we gotta change drainage, the city, Ron knows about it, city knows about it, and the homeowners can't fill their backyard in because they're probably gonna block the water out covered with Cannon Equipment, so, just so everybody knows about it.
Yep. I mean, there is an alley back there, if you look-
There's an alley back there, it's good.
Yeah.
Right.
So, there is an alley back there.
Always. Good. So, I'll make a motion to approve that.
I'll second.
A motion by Leroy, second by Bill to approve the conditional use permit to allow the existing vacant structure and property to be used as a single-family detached dwelling in the RB district, as recommended by the planning commission, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Okay, I think that was everything that was brought down. And, uh, at this point, we'll move on to reports. Greg?
Um, I don't have too much right now.
Justin?
Some good news about the library project. In the design process, the windows on the south side, which is where we're having problems at, the semicircle window and the four rectangular windows, all the small rectangular windows across the building, were designed with the hopes that we wouldn't eventually be able to put stained glass in those windows. Um, in the process of looking at the building and stuff, we did look at some windows that were manufactured by Anderson, but it was caused too much, and so, the foundation sent out a request for proposals and we have found a lady that's originally from One Domingo, now works out of Northfield, and as soon as we get a leakage issue finished, um, the foundation has several donors that are interested in filling in the semicircle window and four of the rectangular windows to get that project underway, so, hopefully within a year we'll have stained glass in the library.
Swimming pool, so?
We could do a river.
A fault inside, huh?
Well, staying with Justin's, uh, water theme of rivers and stuff, I just wanted to let everybody know, we are, uh, monitoring the, uh, the spring melting. Uh, so far, uh, it's been very favorable for us, we haven't seen significant increases in the water level, uh, still, you know, a lot of snow cover and, and ice, we're, of course, hoping that we don't get, uh, significant rainfall, uh, until after the snow is gone and, you know, some of the frost is out, so it has somewhere to go other than the waterways. Uh, but we are continuing to monitor it, I just wanted the council to be aware that we're already looking at, uh, you know, actions we can take if we start to see significant, uh, sudden melt or anything that, uh, will allow us to be prepared for, especially our couple of properties that always seem to be the most vulnerable, uh, that we're, uh, we're already looking at that, that's all I have. Oh, and there'd be a police commission, uh, following the meeting.
So, is this you, uh, the new you now, Jeff, without the uniform, or what's the deal here?
Well, you may have noticed my cart.
I noticed your foot here last time.
Yeah, yeah, so, uh, I'm not, uh, not wearing my uniform right now, so that I'm, I'm not quite as obvious of a target.
Oh, okay.
I'm hoping that, you know, they'd notice you guys first.
Okay.
But-
In case you gotta run, you want us to jump-
I'm not running, so, we can crawl somewhere together.
Rolling.
I told him, like I told the chief in Washington County, the sheriff in Washington County today, I said, I didn't know you guys owned anything but a uniform. Ron?
Well, first, I wanna, again, thank you for the opportunity to work with you and your great staff. Um, it has been really an interesting first seven days of work, uh, definitely found something to do right away, Justin, thank you very much.
But I will say, uh, Justin's response to, uh, the water issue and his immediate, uh,
contact with Bosert and, and, uh, it was really good, I mean, his, his response jumped right on it and was aggressive with them. I was impressed with their response right away, getting AET out and doing the, the testing even as of, uh, when did they do that, was that, uh, last week?
Tuesday.
Yeah. But Justin had said at our department manager meeting, the Monday I started, a week ago Monday, that, um, I could get comfortable in my position for a week or so and then I could come over and visit him, and then he lied to me and he called me that afternoon and he said, we have issues, so. Spent a little time there, but, uh, I think, I appreciated the help and the way you stuck to that project, so, we'll keep at it. Uh, spent one day or good, good part of a day with Greg Anderson, going through a list of six pages of projects, past, present, and future, so, uh, it was really good to get up to speed and it's fun to get back into the, uh, development arena again where activity's actually happening and, uh, working with, working with, well, fun, and it's always not fun, but fun stuff, and, um, but it's been, you've got good, great people working with, with you, so, uh, appreciate the opportunity again and looking forward to seeing what adventures we find out later this week and next week and thereafter.
Merle?
Nothing.
Welcome aboard, Ron.
Thank you.
I have nothing.
Uh, first of all, I, I walked around, uh, it's, yeah, you jumped right into the frying pan, I think I followed you three times ready this week. Uh, and for Jeff, I wanted to wish the officer the best that's, that's leaving and going to Red Wing and, and wish the best to the new person coming in, make sure you pass that on, thank them for their services.
I, I will, I, I know that the, uh, the new officer is, is very excited about, uh, you know, getting more connected with, uh, with the community. Officer Sather, you know, ran, uh, sort of our community relations component of, you know, uh, when we did, uh, presentations and, and group things, um, and so now we're gonna have to find somebody that, within that, uh, that does that, but, uh, I think we've got, uh, really good staff in-house, uh, and somebody's gonna step up and, and wanna take that role, and I think that, uh, the community will be pleased with, uh, with the direction we've been in and, and the direction we're continuing to go, but thank you, Leroy.
The other thing was, uh, the fire department, it was nice to see that thing with the fire department tonight, uh, I think over the years I sensed a little bit of- I wanted to thank the citizens out there, uh, for being patient with our freeze-ups and our water problems. I also wanna thank the citizens that are good enough to let us tap in to their outside faucets to feed another house, to be a good neighbor so we could keep them in water, uh, to give you an example, like Conner Foods down there, uh, we took a feed off of them to, uh, feed somebody that didn't have water. Uh, the manager was reluctant because he works for a big corporation, uh, but was kind enough to get it resolved so we could tap in down there and get some water to people that didn't have it. So, I just wanna say a special thanks, uh, to people for their patience while we worked through this, uh, trouble we got this year with all this stuff. Um, the other thing for you, Ron, so I don't have to call you again, is, uh, I forgot to tell you this week that the property out there by Subway, uh, the state bought that kinda before they did anything else out there, they were supposed to buy all that. Then, uh, last summer or spring something, they finally got it bought and they went and put up construction bumpers all the way around it and, and said, state property, stay out, like somebody was gonna step on their property or something. So, I got ahold of Eric and told him I didn't think it was very fair to Subway to have construction bumpers all the way around that lot, it looked from the highway like there was construction going on, I figured it interfered with Subway's sales because some people thought, well, there's construction, I ain't pulling in there. So, they did take that down, um, but I would like, uh, them to think about either planting grass on that lot or doing something besides just leaving it sit there. The other thing, two, three years ago on the planning commission, uh, someone brought up the fact that we could use a parking area for, uh, guest campers that are in town staying with the kids overnight, need a place for their camper, so, maybe the state could work on, uh, with us on something like that, and I just, I know you're dealing with the state lot right now, so I would just bring that into the picture too and see what we can do about maybe doing something with that lot or working with him, um, something, rather than just sitting there with stakes all around it, say, stay off or something. Okay, that's it, sorry, guys.
It's okay.
Welcome, Ron, and I'd thank Nick, Officer Sather, for his years of service here in Cannon, and good luck in Red Wing.
Welcome, Ron.
Thank you.
I know you jumped into, you know, a fire thing right away, but it's good.
It's all solvable.
Like I told you, you had to have your running shoes on when you got here, so, uh, welcome and, uh, we look forward to-
Uh, welcome, and, uh, we look forward to working with you and, uh, keeping the city going. Uh, I know there's a lot of things going on, uh, hopefully we'll have more going on, uh, as time goes on, and, uh, I know there's a lot of, uh, irons in the fire out there with, uh, different issues, including the, uh, stoplight issues out here on, uh, on fifty-two and, and some other things, so, um, we'll just keep moving along.
Thank you.
And with that, nobody has anything else, council will take a motion to adjourn.
So.